Tick tock, tick tock. I really need to get some pre information loaded here for.
I think we're good. I think we're going, Brian.
And we are live.
Okay, staff, are you ready?
Yep.
Okay, let's call the June 2nd meeting of the Timoth planning commission to order at 6:02 PM, please. May we have a roll call, Brian?
Certainly Chairperson Philip Goldstein.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Marty Jost.
Here.
Commissioner Scott Royce.
Here.
Commissioner Don Rizden.
Here.
Alternately Lisa Bard.
Here.
Alternate Eric Westland.
Here.
But thanks. Staff commissioners, any amendments to the agenda?
No.
All right, hearing none, move on. Determination of alternate voting. Lisa is going to, will be voting on all items. And the other item under administrative, we have to reelect officers. Commissioners Marty and I are interested in in serving in these capacities. If you'll have us another year. Any, any objections to that? Hearing none. Staff, I've blown this each of the last couple of years. Am I correct? I need a motion second and a vote on each position in turn?
Correct.
Okay, may I, do I have a a motion to approve Marty Jost as vice chair of planning commission?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Lisa. Roll call vote, Brian, please.
Lisa Bard.
Yes.
Commissioner Don Rizden.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott Royce.
Yes.
Commissioner or Vice Chairperson Marty Jost.
Do I recuse? I mean, obviously, yes.
And Chairperson Philip Goldstein.
Yes. Very good. Do I have a motion, assuming I don't have to recuse, do I have a motion to approve me as a chairperson?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Check.
Roll call, please.
Planning Commissioner Lisa Bard.
Yes.
Planning Commissioner Don Rizden.
Yes.
When Commissioner Scott Royce.
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Marty Jost.
Yes.
Chairperson Phil Golden.
Yes, and thank you all for the faith in Marty and me once again on behalf of Marty and me. Public comment, this is an opportunity for anybody who wishes to speak on something that is not on the agenda. Kevin, Brian, is there anybody that signed up? I didn't think there was anybody's five o'clock, so nobody has signed up. Okay, so we will close the general public comment. And as a reminder, commissioners, the two items on the agenda.
Sorry, Phil. Phil, sorry, one question that just didn't want to overlook it. Were there any emails or anything that came in? No?
No. No.
All right, sorry.
Okay, sorry, I should have mentioned that too. Thank you. And the two items on the agenda are our site plans or will, there is no public comment on those, so we will not open and close public comment at that time. Next item is a consent agenda which consists only of the approval of the March 17th meeting minutes. Commissioners, any additions or corrections to the minutes?
No.
Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the March 17th meeting minutes as part of the consent agenda?
Some move.
Some move.
Got a second?
Again.
Roll call vote.
Commissioner Lisa Bard.
Yes.
Commissioner Don Rizden.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott Royce.
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Marty Jost.
Yes.
Chairperson Phil Goldstein.
Yes, thank you. The vote is 5-0, the consent agenda is approved. Business items, item 6A Panda Express site plan, who's presenting that?
It'll be me, Chairperson.
Okay, Kevin, all yours.
All right, let me get going here. All right, can you all see my screen there?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, thanks Chairperson. So this is a site plan application for a Panda Express restaurant. The owner is Pooter Investment Partners and the applicant is Heights, Height Venture Architecture, who's represented tonight by Kenny La Forest and Eric Abel, Abelin. The site is located on lot six of the Gate, or Timoth Gateway South subdivision, north of Freddy's, west of Costco, as you can see there on the map. It is zoned C2 with PD overlay, as you can see from the zoning map here. And a fast food restaurant with drive-through is a permitted use in this zoning district. The proposal is for a roughly 2,300 square foot restaurant building with a minimum of eight drive-through stacking spaces. I believe they actually have about eight stacking spaces in their drive-through. The required minimum parking for a fast food restaurant is one space for every 20, 125 square feet of building, which yield the minimum of 20 spaces. And this proposal is providing 43 parking spaces, which includes 288 compliant spaces. The proposed plan is also providing roughly 22% of landscaping on the site, as you can see from the landscape plan here. Here are some rough images of the elevations. I believe Eric will go into a little bit more of a graphical presentation of what these look like. Staff has reviewed this site plan against the review criteria and it successfully meets the criteria set for the land use code. With that, I will turn it over to Eric for a brief presentation.
Thank you, Kevin, and thank you, Brian, for setting up this forum and thank you Chair Commissioners for providing this forum so that we can still continue business in these environments. This is my first Sydney meeting in this forum or this kind of platform, and I'm sure it won't be my last. So thank you very much for giving us the opportunity. I'm Eric Abelin with Heights Venture Architects principal and Kenny La Forest is job captain on this project. I want to introduce you first to Panda Express as a company. It's a family-owned company. It's owned by Andrew and Peggy Shern. We started in Pasadena, California with the Panda Inn back in the late 70s. And it's still there. It's a wonderful restaurant and it acts as the incubator for what they do here in the Panda Express venue. So if you're ever in Pasadena, get, I recommend the Panda Inn, get the sea bass and the walnut shrimp. It's the same walnut shrimp that they serve here. It's just a little bit better. Panda Express as a company is really focused on family, community, and they're really involved in community and charitable events. And so with, with recent events, it really stresses their desire to provide a high-class dining experience and really promote family dining. So they want more people to experience the dining of a family at a dinner table. And so it's a little bit different now because they're mostly drive-through and carryout. But when their dining rooms open up again, it'll open up that experience as well. Going page down, going through the site plan. The building lays out pretty well at the north side of the site. And as Kevin mentioned, we have eight car stacking. We have enough internal overflow that if there was a demand that we wouldn't overflow into the driveline at Costco, there was some concern about that. And the alignment of our drivelines with Costco's drivelines was deliberate and provides for better circulation and better flow in and out of the site. So we've had good circulation around the site. We took the drive-through up to the north side and provides a view corridor to Costco from the highway, really opens up the space between us and Freddy's, so it doesn't look as dense of development. We provide a good level of landscaping around the dumpster enclosure, which we tuck behind the building. It'll be clad in the same material and the same colors as the building itself. And it has a full seven-foot-high metal gates that would hide the enclosure when it's not in use. So all of the, all of the business aspects and all of the nastiness is hidden by landscaping and tucked in the back of the building. And we prevent our, present our, the good face of the building to the highway as well as to Freddy's and folks at Costco. That's the wrong direction. The building itself is, says 2,300 square feet. They really want to use stone and wood materials. The wood material that we use is a fiber-on board. It's a PVC impregnated board with a fiber impregnated board, so it makes it lighter and more durable, gives a really rich view of wood. And they use a lot of wood and natural materials in their dining room. So this ties into the interior, interior. The Wayne's coat has a cast stone base and the colors are natural colors of grays and dark bronze and this tan for the building itself. The entry of the drive-through and the entry of the customers, the two portals where they interact with customers are wrapped in the stone and create these portals of interaction. So there's, there's good wayfinding as far as where the, where the entrance is, as well as where the drive-through interactions happen. Signage, we have a little bit limited signage here, trying to address, you know, where, where are we trying to attract? I think, you know, the highway corridor is a good attraction. So we have signage on the north and the south side. But also we have a little bit of a graphic on the backside of the building to talk to the Costco side without being assigned itself, just something to dress up that elevation, give it some, give it a little bit of artwork and bring a little bit more interest to the architecture in the form, the modern form of the building. A quick shot of the interior, again, the use of natural wood in the center, you'll see a community table where groups of family or larger groups can gather. That concept might change here in the near future and how they organize that and how they, they manage the movable seating and the fixed tables. But I think the concept again is, is nice, rich, warm materials around the dining room and trying to provide a, a higher quality dining experience to match the higher quality of their, of their product. So Panda Express is excited to be here, to be a part of your community and we thank you for your time.
Thanks, Eric. Staff, anything to add to Eric's information?
Nothing else, Chairperson.
Okay, commissioners, let me turn it over to you. Let's go through, first Marty, any, any questions, concerns for staff or for Eric?
No concerns, just a question that when I was going through this and on one of the graphics she showed too, that there's not a crosswalk between the parking lot and over across roadway into Costco. I saw one on the drawing a little bit to the north, but I didn't see one. You know, kind of directly adjacent to the parking lot. Is that?
Where exactly are you talking about, Marty?
Well, in the, one of the drawings that you showed, showed a crosswalk to the north, which, you know, I don't know, yeah, that one, it shows that one. I didn't know if there was one, if that one was an actual one. But I didn't see one, you know, directly on the parking lot. Is that, is that going to be the case or?
So Marty, I'll, I'll answer that. That crosswalk there aligns with a pedestrian corridor in the Costco parking lot. So there's a space for folks to be able to go all the way to the front door of Costco. It's, it's just off of the Panda site, so when the next development comes into the north of Panda, they'll have a connection there that will run, that'll line up with that. Otherwise, there's no crosswalks heading to the, to the east into Costco because you'd just be dumping people into the drive aisles. So they're, we're trying to discourage actually, if you can, a little bit, that movement.
That makes sense. That makes sense. I didn't notice that that was walkway there, so that, that makes perfect sense.
Okay.
Marty, anything else?
Um, you know, just kind of a follow on to that then, that if that lot isn't developed in a while or for a while, you know, is it something that we would have to, you know, put a short piece of sidewalk over, you know, to get people there, to encourage them to go the right way?
Typically, we wait until those develop and then push that development onto those. If there was enough of a demand, there might be a reason to put a little temporary connection there. We could kind of wait and see a little bit. I don't know how, there may be some, this would probably be mostly staff or folks that had parked over at Costco and they wanted to walk over to Panda to get lunch or something and they would use that pathway and they kind of get, I mean, the problem is, like you say, I mean, you kind of be dumped off right into the vacant lot there and it would be a challenge to get over. So there could be a, there could be a little interim thing that happens, but at the moment, there's nothing planned for that.
Okay. Yeah, Matt, just to, just to jump in there. I mean, that, I know we all know this, but that's private property, so it's, it's not something the town could just unilaterally say we want to put something there.
Yeah.
So even if they started to use it as a path, we could talk to the property owner about improving it. But, but I think we'd have to let, you know, some time pass and see how this works first.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Anything else? Scott Royce, any questions or concerns?
No, sir.
Okay, Don Rizden.
Just a question, you know, kind of based on some of the things we've been seeing, you know, currently and, you know, we may have to live with for a little while. Is there any kind of planning that went into? And I don't know if Panda even does this as far as like online pickup and parking and how they're going to deal with that kind of thing?
They've, they've really been developing their online ordering presence as well as what they call grab and go. So there's, I don't think I have the interior floor plan here, but there's a, an area near the drink station, right next to the POS station where, where people would pay for their food. A shelf that would house essentially prepackaged meals and orders that have been ordered online or over the phone. And then they can, people can just walk in, see their their order, ready to go with their name on it and just take it and, and go. So it's already been paid for. There's limited transactions with the people in the store. In their prototype situation, in their main building situation, right now, there isn't a dedicated window or a dedicated access port for those types of things. But in places where they're taking over old buildings and redeveloping other buildings and turning them into restaurants, that becomes a very critical piece of design element where they have a dedicated window for third-party Grubhub delivery service or online or online pickup people, so that they don't even have to enter the store, so to speak. It's very isolated process and they can manage that separately from the dining room or drive-through type service.
Great, thank you. That's all, that's all I have for questions.
Okay, Lisa, questions or concerns? Is Lisa still with us?
She's, she's on mute.
I put myself on mute. No, I have no questions.
No, nothing. Okay, Eric Westland, any questions or concern?
Yeah, Matt, just a quick question for you. How many more lots are there in this development over there? I know there's another one to the north, you said.
Yeah, there are two.
There's three left, Matt. There's, there's one next to Taco Bell and then two north of this one.
Okay, thank you.
Or no, one north of this one. I take that back. You are correct, Matt.
Two, two.
Yeah.
That was my, my question as well. Anything else, Eric?
No, that's all.
Okay, staff, anything to add before we ask for a motion? Nothing. Okay. Commissioners, do I have a motion to approve business item 56A Panda Express site plan?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Lisa Bard.
Yes.
Commissioner Don Rizden.
Yes.
Commissioner Scott Royce.
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Marty Jost.
Yes.
Chairperson Philip Goldstein.
Yes. Very good to vote unanimous. Eric, Kenny, well, congratulations. Welcome to Timna.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Item 6B, the learning experience site plan. Kevin, is that you two?
That is correct.
Okay, take it away.
All right, let me share my screen here. And we will kick off. All right, thank you, Chairperson. This is a site plan application for the Learning Experience Daycare Facility. The owner is RSS Holdings and the applicant is Schuman Company, is represented by Alex Schuman. This actually has two items to it, Phil. There is a site plan which is getting approved by you guys as planning commission. And then there is a recommendation of two waivers to town council for their review and approval. But I will go through the whole entire site background. So this is a site plan, like I said, for the Learning Experience Daycare Facility. It's located at the north, northwest corner of Summerfields Parkway and River Pass Road in the West Village subdivision, just adjacent to the community park to the west. As you can see on the map there, it is zoned neighborhood commercial with PD overlay is the last neighborhood. It's actually the only neighborhood commercial piece in the subdivision. The plan is for a 10,000 square foot building with outdoor play area and playground. And the minimum parking for a child care facility is one and a half spaces per 1,000 square feet. And this would yield a minimum of 15 parking spaces. And then the applicant is providing 37 spaces along with 288 compliant spaces. The site also provides roughly 49% landscaping on the site. A lot of it is on the south there due to drainage that is encumbered by the site. So that is the site lay, site overview. And now into the waivers. So the applicant is requesting two waivers. One from the buffer yard standard, and actually I'll go back. And then here's some elevations of the building. They're using stone, they're using lap siding, composite roofing, so it is compatible and similar to a lot of the neighborhood residential structures out there. It's very compatible with a lot of the materials used on the single-family residences to give single-family residence character and look and feel. So now into the waivers, as I've mentioned, they are requesting two waivers. One is a waiver from the buffer yard standards and then, and one waiver from the landscape setback to parking lots from adjacent streets. And that is due to the configuration of this lot. Since it is a narrow lot and bounded by three streets, it is a little bit tough to meet the setback requirements. So the first one is the table 5.5, which is the buffer yard requirement between a neighborhood commercial and an R2, single-family residential lot. This is seen on the left side of the page here on the west side of the property. The buffer requirement is a buffer type 30, which shall consist of landscape area of 30 feet in width. And it must include one deciduous, large deciduous tree for every linear feet. And then one medium evergreen tree planted on a triangular staggered space for every 15 lineal feet. With this, the applicant is requesting a 17-foot wide buffers or reduction to 15 feet. And they are proposing many ornamental trees and evergreen trees. And they are also proposing to replace the fencing to the adjoining property owner with a six-foot-high privacy fence to give a little bit extra screening and buffering to that residential neighbor. We, we as staff support this reduction because this is the parking lot that's oriented to the resident, residential neighbor to the, to the west there. So it's the parking lot and it's not the outdoor play area. So there will be less noise, less impacts to the neighboring property owner. And as you saw in your packet, the applicant has contacted the adjacent property owner about replacing the fence and providing a new one and maintenance. So the applicant has already been in communications with that property owner about buffering and fencing. The next, the next waiver that the applicant is requesting is from section 5872 of the landscape, Land Use Code. That is the landscape setback to parking lots, which is a requirement of 30 feet from arterials, 25 feet from all other streets. In the code, it also is written that the setback may be reduced to 15 feet from the right-of-way or property line if used in combination with a three-to-four-foot masonry or stone decorative wall. The applicant is providing that on the north side. They are requesting it to go down to 15 feet landscape setback because on this north side, it's, you can see a dark black line. That is actually a masonry or stone wall that they are going to put up that will screen and buffer cars and headlights from the neighboring properties to the north, along with the additional landscaping that is within the 15-foot setback there. And then because of that, that then pushes the parking lot in the site to the south, which then creates the south side of the parking lot not being able to meet the 25-foot setback to River Pass Road. And staff is supportive of that being reduced down to seven feet because there is an eight-foot detached sidewalk and then a roughly 15 to 17-foot landscape, landscape area adjacent to the road, which then provides about, then with the additional seven feet they have, there's about 33 feet of setback to the road. And then the applicant is proposing landscaping that includes some evergreen trees that reach about 15 feet in height at full maturity and then some shrubs that are, sorry, eight to 10 feet at full maturity and then shrubs that can grow up to four feet in height to provide additional buffering. So that is the waiver requests that are being, that are going to town council for approval. They, it is an action that you are recommending a motion to town council for approval or denial of those waivers. But the site plan itself is a motion recommendation for approval or denial that is associated with the planning commission. Staff has reviewed this site plan based on the review criteria out of the lands, the land use code. And other than the waivers that I had just mentioned, the site meets those requirements of the review criteria. And I know that was a lot to take in real quick. And with that, I will turn it over to Alex, who might have a couple more things to do add. Alex, are you there?
There you go.
Yep.
Good evening, everybody. I just had a couple, just high, high-level information I just wanted to share on the, on the learning experience as a whole. There's a company, I guess, currently are operating at a little over, I think, exactly, I think today it's 267 daycare facilities across the country. They're based in Florida. The one unique component that I was intrigued with and I think really I looked into a partnership with them is their, they, they develop all of their educational material in-house at their corporate facility down in, in Florida. And all of their material is consistently updated. You know, even, even more than annually. So each year, kids are not, I guess, going through, you know, old materials. Everything is updated very frequently. And looking at this facility that we've got planned here on this corner at full capacity, we'll be able to service the needs of 171 kids and looking at an employment staff of 24. And happy to answer any, any specific questions on the project itself, but excited to bring this service to the community.
Okay, I've got a couple of questions, but I'll turn it over. Staff, anything to add to what Alex said before I turn it over to commissioners?
No.
No, no, okay. Marty, you're up first. Questions? No, no, okay. Marty, you're up first. Questions, comments?
Yeah, so the only question I have is, I know we didn't have anybody that sent in emails or anything beforehand on this. Has there been any communication from the, the people that neighbor this? I know there was the adjacent one on the replacing the fence, but have we heard anything else from the neighboring properties or the neighborhood?
I, when this first came through as an application, Marty, we had received a couple of inquiries from some, some residents asking about what was being proposed. And I had talked with a couple of folks and mentioned that it was going to be a daycare. But that's really that, all that I have heard. I don't know if Matt has heard much else other than another, another resident that did email in aware of the project and asking some specific questions. I think that's the one that Matt was going to go for and I'll let him chime in on that.
Yeah, we had one, Marty, that was a resident across the street that was asking about access to the property, if it could be taken off a River Pass road. And due to that being a minor collector, major collector classification, the intersection spacing wouldn't work. So we worked with Alex and his team very closely on trying to figure out how to make this fit in this site. And therefore those waivers are being thrown out there as well to try to accommodate some of those, accommodate this use, which was always intended for this property from the very master planning start of the project. So, you know, we, we answered the questions that they had and they seemed, it was more of just interested in what's going on. So I think everything has been answered from the public that has been brought up to us. You know, I'll add though, that the site has been posted, Kevin, you can verify, but it's been posted throughout this process. So if anybody, it, folks that are neighboring the property, if they weren't aware of what was going on via other website or other publications, they were by way of driving by and seeing the sign on the site. So there was opportunity for that to happen.
Marty, anything else?
No, thanks.
Scott Roy, is any questions or comments?
No, sir.
Okay. Don Rizden?
Nothing. Thank you.
Okay. Lisa?
Nope, I have nothing.
Okay. Eric?
Yeah, the only comment I'd make is the location of the trash enclosure being on the west side next to that adjacent house. I don't know if anybody looked at that. Would that be better placed in the south? In the south parking stalls or if that's a consideration at all or whatever? That's the only thing that caught my eye was the location of that trash dumpster enclosure.
Yeah, Eric, we had looked at that during the, the review process and we actually had communication with Alex and his team on the trash enclosure. And I, a lot of it was dealing with the landscape setback and the configuration of the parking lot for the location there. But Alex, I don't know if you have much else to add into that?
No, yeah, I think it just came down to, yeah, the site orientation and, and meeting our, our parking count that we were wanting to satisfy with.
There's also kind of the circulation of the trash truck, I think was taking account. So as you come in, you return and head into it, pick it up and then circulate out. I mean, you could probably have moved it to other places, none actually being, you know, better or worse tech, you know, I mean, it's kind of a subjective thing at that point. Is it better to have it against River Pass Road as a bigger item sitting out there? Or tucked into the site, you know, surrounded by landscape a little more? And then, you know, the adjacent property owner that's still 17-ish feet away from it and it's towards the front of their house. I don't think that they're gonna, I mean, the trash is, you know, pick up once a week probably, Alex, I would imagine. So from a noise disruption perspective, you know, happening after, you know, it won't be before seven in the morning or anything like that. So.
Proximity of the fence and the masonry wall, it probably makes most sense there. So just a comment anyway.
Yeah, we, we did, we did make, we talked a bit about that and this seemed like a reasonable location from the, from staff's perspective.
Agreed.
Eric, anything else?
No, that's all. Thanks.
I, I have a couple of questions. I'll take off on, on Eric's. You mentioned, Kevin, that the property owner was, had received the requisite contact, but didn't mention, would I presume that there, they found everything acceptable? And, and does that include that the, the trash receptacle, is that, was that part of the contact?
The, the contact was not in regards to the trash receptacle fill. It was in regards to the fencing and buffering and the removal of the existing fence, the construction of a new fence and the maintenance of that.
And they're okay? They are okay with all that?
Yeah, that was, that was part of the, one of the attachments was a letter from that adjacent property owner detailing the, the construction of the fence, the maintenance and all that is the responsibility of the learning experience.
And Chairperson, Alex, do you mind expanding a little bit on the conversation that you had with that property owner?
Yeah, happy to do so. So, yeah, obviously there, we did get a signed agreement and acknowledgement there from the adjacent neighboring. I did provide them a full set of site plans for their review prior to their execution on that. So they, they definitely had a ample time to review the, the whole site plan and the, and the layout and had, had no objections to it.
Good. Thanks, Alex. On the, I'm not sure about our standards or if there are in land use code about pickup and drop off, this would seem to be a a situation where there's going to be, that's primary, 171 kids at max. Alex, is there any staff, is there sufficient in your opinion, given the proliferation of drop off and pickup? Is, is there sufficient space for all that along with all the parking?
So we talked quite a bit about that in terms of how disruptive it may be to the neighbors during those times. The, the parking lot as it's designed allows kind of a, a circulation through. It does have a few more parking spaces than the minimum required per our code. So there's, you know, a little bit extra interior. The other component that we looked at is the frontage along Tuxedo Park is a pretty long unbroken expanse, other than the driveway entering into the parking lot. Where, and I'm not sure operationally, Alex, so I have to explain that. But if there was a staging of cars along there at, at those key times, they could stage along the curb there because it's on-street parking is allowed. And we, I think we counted the number. I don't have it off the top of my head, but there maybe 10 or, or more, or 15 cars could probably stack there along that curb line during those periods as well.
Is the, are there different time periods for this or is there, for all practical purposes, a possibility there could be 171 kids being dropped off at, at early in the morning? And then 171 picked up later in the day?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, yeah, I guess it's hard to say. I guess the, you know, they're, they're, the kids will, you know, could range from, you know, toddlers to preschools and, and there is flexible hours. So in speaking with, you know, one of the operators there at TLE, you know, all they could share was that, you know, they, they operate 267 of these locations across the country. And they've, they've found that, you know, anything north of 35, having a interior parking for, you know, more than 35 spaces has been more than sufficient and they have had, had no issue with, you know, drop off, pickup under those circumstances.
Yeah, I was just trying to get a, get a sense of it again. And I'm sorry if you, I think he answered it, but I mean, would there be the first session in the morning, are there, are there different sessions throughout the day such that 171 youngsters are not being dropped off and picked up all at the same time?
Yes. I mean, it's, the way I've been explaining it is that, you know, they're, they're drop off, it's, it's an open, it's an open classroom setting. And so, you know, parents can feel free to, yeah, they can then drop, there's not a set time or pickup time. They're, they're flexible to pick up, drop off, you know, depending on their, their schedules and life.
Okay. Well, that, yeah, that was my concern. I, I trust staff's judgment in this regard, but just didn't want that to be overlooked because I, I could see a difficulty if there was 171 pickups and drop off all at the same time. Morning, afternoon, whatever, evening. I could see between the parking spaces and even this on-street parking, I could see that being a problem. Staff, you reasonably certain that that's not an issue and that's been taken into consideration?
Well, it, I mean, it is a concern potential. The, I don't know what the remedy is to solve that. If, because, and I guess everybody could show up at eight o'clock if they really, was that, was their drop off time? And I mean, you certainly have that potential of that circulation. So it, but it is allowed use and it's a, it's exactly the planned use for this property. So I mean, there, there's a potential for some conflicts there, but it, the remedy may not be available off-site to accommodate that or onsite for that matter.
Yeah. And, and Phil, like Alex had mentioned, it's, you know, it is a free, you know, open time to drop off and pick up. And for the most part, we, you know, when parents are, you know, doing a drop off and a pickup, it's a quick in and out. It's not, you know, as if they're hanging around for a half hour or longer, taking up that space. So there's going to be, there will be, you know, a lot of in and out and, you know, spaces becoming available, you know, as parents come in and drop off at other time. So with the, the 35 spaces, you know, in onsite, you know, staff felt that that was adequate to handle staff that's onsite and then parents coming in, dropping off and then quickly turning around and leaving. Matt and I actually kind of looked at a couple of other, you know, these, and, you know, the parking demand, you know, when, once kids are there, it's virtually minimum. You know, is it just only staff that's there? And then, you know, as Alex mentioned, a random parent coming in, you know, based on when they wanted to pick up their kid. So there, there will be, you know, a lot of quick in and out and not a lot of lengthy parking that could cause a lot of issues with that parking lot.
What, where would, and again, this is not entirely, if at all, within planning commission's purview, but how many, about Alex, any idea about how many staff are on hand for 171 kids?
Yeah, ba- based on the count, I think it is actually on one of the, the site plans. But yeah, the calculation, I think from a state or licensing requirement, I think would then be 24.
Okay. And staff, where will presumably the 24 staff, if they all drive their own car, can't take up the parking spaces? That was another question I had. Where, where will they park? Will they be prohibited from parking out on the residential streets? And if not, where would they be anticipated they would park?
There's, what is it, Kevin? 34 spaces on, on property?
35, I believe.
35. So they can park in the parking lot that's provided. And there's about 10 or so extra beyond what the staff needs are.
Yeah, I'm, this is, these concerns are not sufficient. I'd like to hear commissioners, any, anybody else have questions about that? I can, I'm not so concerned that it would be something I would vote to turn down, but I think it is a, it is a ser, it is a major question. Of course, the park is across, across the street reasonably close and there's addition, going to be additional parking in there, but I don't know that it's in our best interest to have all, all those spaces taken up, particularly if there would be events going on in, in our, in our park. But I don't see how you can have the staff take up two thirds of the existing parking spaces and have this many kids being picked up and dropped off here. And, and I also can't see the 24 staff parking in front of people's houses out on the street. Is there parking allowed on River Pass to the south?
Chairperson, can I, can I jump in for a second?
Please.
I'm, I'm fairly intimately involved with the operation of a daycare current or, or my interaction with the daycare. So I just wanted to point out a couple of things out. The first thing is they, the daycare that I work at has similar hour scheme and so they run shifts. So they don't have all their people there at the same time. There's a, a group of people that, you know, kind of are the early starts and then they have midday and then they have afternoon people as well. So I would anticipate that probably the most you'd see at this, at one time would be two thirds of that 24 person population. I, I think also there's you know, we have about the team staff at the daycare that we use and about the same number of, of children allowed. You know, a lot of that staff, that's their total number of staff, but there's some rotating days off and things like that. We're down. I was just looking at a site plan of their facility and they fill up about half of the parking lot and then there's usually two or three cars that end up parking on the street. So that's not necessarily, I don't want to speak for the learning experience or, but, but anecdotally, I think I just wanted to, to fill that in. And then also with regards to the drop offs, we, we generally are dropping off at a, at a time that is fairly busy. But there always seems to be enough parking there and I'm there usually, you know, for about eight minutes when I'm dropping off. Usually a little, a little bit longer when we're picking up because you got to kind of corral people, but we usually, when we're dropping off, we're, we're there for a certain amount of time and there seems to be plenty of parking there. And, and it's a similar sized facility with a similar, similar number of rooms. So not to sway the judgment one way or the other, I do think that there's a concern about, you know, parking spilling out into the street. But anecdotally, the, my experience is that that, it seems like an appropriate number of spaces. We actually, at our daycare, have a few less spaces than that. I counted that they had 27 spaces in the, in that lot. So.
37, Brian.
In my, in the one I was.
Okay. But one thing to note on this one is that the Alex and we did talk with Alex a lot about this and the learning experience in their proper, on their particular sites, they want upwards of 35, I think was the number, 34, 35?
Correct. 35, yep.
Is there, is there a target? And that's what they're, out of all their properties, that's what they go for. And so this, this being at 35, 37 is above what the town requires. Albeit, I understand the concern that you have, Chairperson. But I think that their operational needs, they've got it worked out for this sweet spot number of parking spaces and that kind of demand in terms of the coming and going of the, the drop offs and pickups.
And you, you've said from the beginning, this isn't these guys' first rodeo, you know, so they've been doing this a long time. I, I suspect if you, you reach out to them and, and ask them for a typical operational, you know, flow of traffic and people and numbers, they could give you what Phil's asking for and what our expectation should be for this facility.
Commissioners, anybody, thanks, thanks, Don. Commissioners, any, am I all wet here? I just, I'm not, as I said, I'm, this is not such a concern that I would vote no, but I just like to hear, is there anybody else that has, shares the same concern? And do they, do you think it's okay?
He felt this is.
Don Rizden?
Yeah, this is Don. So I actually live over in the area and, you know, when I first saw this, I was a little concerned as well. Just because it is in a residential area. But the more I thought about it, you know, there will be, you know, families that, that walk their children there along with the families, of course, that drive their children there. Plus it provides, you know, jobs to, you know, folks in the area that would be able to walk, you know, to work. So. So, you know, um, the more I thought about it, you know, because the other concern I had too is it's right next to the park. You know, and, you know, people take their kids at the park and they wanna be able to use the park, you know, and I'm assuming they'll take advantage of that as well. Um, but, you know, the more I thought about it, that's kind of where, where I started thinking, you know, because this, we're still developing out here. There's still gonna be more houses that go in, um, and it's quite a nice asset to have in the area. Um, just because, you know, there are so many rooftops, so that, that's kind of how I was looking at it.
Okay, good. I was gonna ask you from that perspective, Eric, you're, I'm not sure how close you are to their, Eric Westland, uh, any thoughts?
Yeah, it's, it's right down the street from me as well and I, I think, uh, to mirror Don's comments, it'll be a benefit to the community. I think, uh, a lot of people that live here will use that service and, um. It's been posted, I've seen the sign for months, so I think that anybody that's curious about it will have done the research and seen it. Um, when I bought my house, those lots were marked as commercial from the beginning, so it's not a surprise. Um, so I, I, I think it is a good asset in the neighborhood personally.
Good, valuable, uh, Lisa, any, anything further on this?
No, I mean, I think it's a good asset as well. I think if this company, you know, is basing their. Parking spaces and everything they're done off of data that they have from other facilities and that has been the. You know, the, the parking flow and the travel flow to pick up and drop off kids and that has been the experience. Like I said, you're basing it off data. It's not based on just this is what we think is going to happen. Then, then that's, to me, I'm a science-based person, that's where the legitimacy comes in. So I do think that if there were large events happening, you know, parties and things like that. Having the park across the street for those large events overflow parking is a unexpected plus. Um, I don't know that I would park there on a regular basis to go pick up and drop off young children. Because I'm gonna want them holding my hands and being real close, but I think that does provide, um, kind of that. Added benefit for if there is a Christmas party and there's a lot of parents coming in, at least there is that very close. So you're not filling up streets and blocking people's houses. So that's.
Thanks, uh, uh, Scott Royce, Marty.
Yeah.
Scott Royce, any?
Yeah, well, for someone who has three kids under the age of seven. Um, and our, our kids have been in private daycare forever, really, that school, the daycare will fill up. From local neighbors instantly. It's gonna be people from the community that are gonna be taking their kids there. It's gonna be an in and out. I mean, really, the, the drop-off even for my children, we take them to Harmony School and it's. You know, like I said, it's, it's five to ten minutes at max and we're gone. I mean, it's. Daycares, keep i- in your community, keep your kids in your community. You know, it's, it's the same kids that live on the street with them, it's the same kids that grew up with them, it's the same kids that are around them. And they're all in the same place, like daycares are something that are such a necessity and. I mean, you could call twenty of them now and there'd be a waiting list. Like, uh, the opportunity to have something that's so close to home for a, a lot of people and I, I mean, I live in Old Town, I don't live in. In Timoths Ranch, but the, the opportunity to have that available for families in this community is such a huge asset. That is something that we need so badly and like I said, it brings, it brings everybody together, you know, it, it, it keeps it together. And I don't, I don't worry about traffic because it's, it's in-out and in-out, you know, people come and go and there is, you know, mixed shifts. There's, there's morning, there's afternoon, there's full days, you know, there's a mix between that, you know, kids that go just in the morning, in the afternoon, some that go all day. It's, it's really a blessing that this is an opportunity that we have, that we can create someplace where our kids can be. Locally in town and be together, so the same kids from the same neighborhood can be together at the same place. And be watched after. I mean, it honestly, to me, it's, you know, it's a no-brainer. I, I really think that. This is a great opportunity for Timoths. I think it's a great opportunity for, for Timoths Ranch and I, you know, I'm for it, so.
Great, good, uh, Marty, anything else to add?
So. I'm, I know we've had a sign up and I know, you know, this agenda went out and things, but, you know, some, sometimes people just don't pay attention to this. Which they should, if I see something near my house, I'm going to, but given, given that, you know, the sensitivity of this, this is a little bit different than it's in the neighborhood. You know, it's, the commission is going to approve the site plan, but the waivers have to go to town council, right?
Correct.
So, given that, um, is there something we can do, maybe an email or something? To kind of invite the neighbors to, you know, make a comment, because I'm a little bit bothered, we didn't hear anything from the neighbors. On this, so before it goes to council, is there something we can do to kind of solicit some feedback so we hear from them? The other thing, you know, could, so they'll, the council will hear those concerns and also I think it's, it's one of those where. You know, if, if the council sees some of those concerns, they kind of have the scope of authority that goes beyond the planning commission. Like parking and things like that to maybe offer some resolutions.
So Marty, the, the council is only approving the waivers. You as planning commission i- is approving the site. So, uh, we will not be presenting the site plan to council, um, for their review of that. They are solely taking, um, their approval of the waivers, uh, from that standpoint. So i- it, at this point, it's one of those things that you guys are approving the site, um, and giving a recommendation. To, to council for those waivers, which that's their, um, approving, so they're not approving the site plan, um, on top of what you guys have. Um, so it's gonna, that, there's not gonna be a, um, a large opportunity to discuss, you know, parking, um, traffic with, uh. You know, council as this is site plan, which is in your purview.
I understand, but there's also some, you know, like I said, I'm, I'm conscious that we haven't heard from them and I know there's. Probably some concern, if this was on my street, I'd be a bit concerned about people parking in front of my house, things like that. So I understand everything that you said, Kevin, but having those waivers gives, you know. At least gives an opportunity for them to be heard and the council to actually do something about it. I understand we're approving the site plan. But just the fact that the, the waivers are going to them enables them to, you know, at least, you know, be heard on that.
Yeah, and, and that's, that's understandable, Marty, and then, um, just one thing with the waivers though, the waivers are. Um, reducing the, the setback in the buffering, which allows for more parking, um, for this site. So i- it's one of those things that we could, um, look at it as, um, your, you know, recommend, recommending denial of the waivers. Which would then cause, you know, those to be met, which then reduces the number of onsite parking. Um, so that, that's fully in your purview as well, which we can look at doing, um, a- as an option. Um, the waivers, the staff had a, you know, was supportive of the waivers because it was something that allowed for. Uh, the additional parking to have onsite and still provided adequate buffering.
I, I know, I know, I'm just providing a.
Yep, no.
See if we can provide a roundabout way to get those comments in, um, if they don't, they don't, that's fine.
If, if I can offer a suggestion or maybe a question, uh, first of all, I'm having heard, uh, at least to this point. Um, the comments from, uh, especially my commissioners, the commissioners that live there, uh, but. And this is a very real concern, but I, I, I will stand down on my, uh, on any formal objection to the project. Uh, but it, a staff, is there a way, uh, because obviously, uh, rejecting the waivers. Uh, that just adds, if I understand, that adds to our problem. It reduces the number of parking spaces. I don't think that we wanna do that, but, uh, is there a way to communicate? To council that, uh, not having heard any, uh, public input on this. Where, on something as Marty correctly pointed out, you would think there would be some, um. At least some minimal, if, if not more, is there a way to communicate that, that, uh, we didn't hear any? Uh, and then, and then also that, just to, as a side note, that, uh, we did have some. Additional discussion about the parking, uh, issue.
Yep, we, we can, um, we can look at some, Matt, chime in there.
I'd like to say something, so Marty, I understand the concerns, um, it, this, I mean, it. If, if thinking through the role of the planning commission in this instance. Um, your, your task is focused on, um, the marriage of this application in terms of its land use. And it's, uh, strict interpretation of the code, um, it is a use permitted by right. Um, obviously, there are potential off-site impacts that are, are there. Um, we have noticed the property by posting it, which is, and I, I get all this, it's all meeting the letter of the code. There is this aspect of, is it, is it right, the right thing to do? So, but from the planning commission's perspective, does it check all the boxes in terms of the land, strict interpretation of the land use code? And that's what you need to weigh in this case, so, um, thinking through those other aspects of it. Certainly, uh, can appreciate, uh, the concerns for the residents. Um, we have gotten two or three comments that were not publicly on the record or anything, it was more of just questions. Um, no real concern stated that they're opposed to it as far as the neighbors are concerned. Um, so taking that out of the equation, I would focus on the land use, um, code application of the. Um, project on the table before you.
Uh, I get that and that's what we have to do and it meets all that. It, it's always been zoned as that, I understand all that, so all of that meets and, you know, I guess. I'm just looking for a forum that if neighbors have a concern that they can go and there's, i- it's not part of the waiver process, I understand. That the concerns are heard and maybe the council can, or the staff can consider something outside of this process. Because some of those fixes like the on-street parking and things like that don't belong in the site plan or outside the purview of what we're deciding. But some of those things need to be considered and maybe off of that agenda, off of the waiver, but considered nonetheless. I, I'm just providing, seeing if we can provide a channel to get that in, so.
Think what Marty's saying is we don't, and there's considerable precedent, not this, nothing exactly like this, but there is precedent. As we've, as we have evolved as a, as a, uh, a commission. For not just meeting the letter of the law, but the spirit of the law as well. So again, is, is there some way to at least communicate that this, this was discussed at length? Uh, with, when it goes to council, even though it's only the waivers that go to them.
Um, sure, we can, if you would like to, um. Trying to think of the, the, the vehicle to get it there, um, we put it, we're putting a staff report together to the council for the waivers. For their very next meeting, uh, we can have a planning commission notes that you guys, uh, have brought up. And include that in that, um, in that staff report. Um, you know, we'll, we will footnote it though, that it's not the, um, the, the council is, uh, not being asked to take action on, um. On that, so, um, just, uh, that's, that's the, that's the position, um, we can put into the staff report.
Yeah, I think, I think we owe it to, to council, we also owe it to, to our residents, uh. We owe it to council also to let them know and see something that they might not otherwise, uh, Marty, is that, does that sound sufficient?
Yeah, you know, like I said, I, I just want the channel for those to be heard, maybe they can act on it outside of the site plan process.
Yeah, just so they're not blindsided, Matt, staff. Uh, I don't think they will be, but, uh, just so they know, we're thinking about it. Commissioners, any, i- i- does that sound acceptable, uh? It, just looking for a head nod if everybody's okay with.
Yes, well, to, to speak to Marty's point, I mean, let's, you know, let's be honest. I mean, they could build a smaller building and have adequate, you know, adequate parking. You know, these waivers are designed about, you know, around their building envelope. You know, there's a way they could do this and have less capacity. Have a smaller building and have the parking, I mean, we could do that and I understand Marty's point of view, like. Once you start to waiver, literally put waivers in on land use code, then, you know, you open the door to the next person. And the person after that, I mean, it's, it's beyond just this one project. You know, once you start to say, okay, well, we'll bend on this, these people's project, then where's that leave us for the next one? You know, like I said, I'm for, like, you know, I think. Daycares are something that are a necessity, I really do, and I think that it'll be filled by people from our community. It's not gonna be kids from Severance or kids from Windsor, I think it'll be kids from Timoths Ranch, but. I understand what Marty's saying, that this is, you know, you, you almost setting a precedence, you know, like. It's, you know, well, we'll bend for them, so what's the next one?
Yeah, I don't think we're, we're not necessarily drawing, I appreciate that, we're not necessarily drawing a line in the sand here. I just think, uh, kind of a word to the wise with the presumption as they are that council is. Is wise in this matter as well, but I think i- if. The commissioner and, uh, rest of you commissioners are okay with that, uh, at, at least a prominent footnote. Uh, as well as at the meeting, I presume, Matt, that you always did a good job of calling their attention to that. Uh, at that time, and so commissioners, if you're okay with that, I, I am as well. Matt, is that, can you?
Let's say the, there's the direction you, okay, so your options are to, uh, approve, um, the application as it is. Uh, approve with conditions, deny, um, and then you have a recommendation on the waivers as well. Um, the, uh, if there is a condition here that you're trying to incorporate in some fashion or other. Um, that you would, and we can have a conversation with Alex, Alex can chime in and see what the possibility is. I know that the conversations we've had with Alex about, uh, reducing the size and pushing and pulling and moving things. Um, uh, on the site ha- have, there's a, there's kind of a tipping point and, and Alex, you'll have to chime in on that. I'm defending the project one way or another, but, uh, that's, you know, to make it a viable project, that's what we were hearing from.
Uh, hold on, one, ju- just so we don't go down the wrong path, I'm not opposing the waivers, you know. I, I think that makes the issues worse, so.
Yeah.
I was, you know, I just, I'm, I'm okay with putting it in the report, just so they know the concerns and. You know, and, you know, let the voices be heard, so I'm fine and I'm not opposed to the waiver.
That, that's what I, that's what I'm advocating too, staff, uh, I, I don't think you'll have to. Correct me, but I don't think that rises to the level of a condition, uh, as it, as it is with, in our protocol, I just think it's. Uh, it's there for council to see.
Yep, we, we can, we can add that into our staff report, um, you know, because part of the staff report will be, um, planning commission action. Um, and we can, we can make a footnote within that, um, that you brought up these concerns.
Everybody, commissioners, you good with that?
Yes, sir.
Don, Lisa, Eric?
Yeah.
Scott, everybody?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Staff, we we good on that one? A good, uh? All right, uh, with that, uh, do I have a motion to approve business item six B, the learning experience site plan?
So moved.
For a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lisa Bard?
Yes.
Commissioner Don Rizden?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott Royce?
Yes.
Chairperson Marty Jost?
Yes.
Chairperson Philip Goldstein.
Yes. Alex, I I'd say welcome to Timoths, but you're into so many things, but, uh, so here's your next, your, your next investment, your next endeavor here at Timoths, so.
Great, thank you, appreciate this.
Moving forward. Uh, move on to reports, uh, commissioners.
Was the waiver a separate one, or that was all?
Yeah, I didn't think it wa- I didn't think the waiver was a separate, but, uh, good point, Marty, is, staff, is that in fact a separate?
It's part of the, uh, recommended, uh, motion of approval, um, that you are recommending approval of the, of the waiver. It's part of the entire motion.
Okay.
Okay.
Good, because I I figured you would have headed me off at the pass if I aired. Thank, thanks. Uh, commissioner, uh, reports, uh, anybody, anything to share? But Marty, anything?
No.
Okay, Scott?
No.
No, uh, uh, Don Rizden?
Nope.
Nothing. Uh, Lisa?
No.
Eric?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, uh, anything, uh, to share, staff, uh, from, uh, town manager, planner, you all, or the engineer, Don, Toronto?
I'll, I'll run first at the, uh, the town, the plant, community development report. We've included that in your packet, so you can see the, um, uh, kind of a summary of building permits, the usual types of things, what uh, current development actions are, um, upcoming or in process, so you can see where, what, what things will be in potentially in front of you in the near future. Um, and then there's some reports, and, um, some information in there about, uh, park and trail improvements and statistics on the resident as well. So, um, if you, if you have any questions about any of those, we just, we're sharing with with you as well, as part of your packet, so that you can, uh, you guys have the opportunity to, um, review those and ask questions related to that.
Good, appreciate that. Uh, anything else from staff? I, I, I have one I, one I meant to mention, uh, keep in mind, uh, the meeting we would have had on the 16th, if in fact we would have it, is if we have a meeting, correct, Kevin, it would be the 30th.
Correct, yeah, I reached out to, to all of you a couple of weeks back, uh, noting that, and I believe all of you got back to me, um, stating that you'd be available if we did have a meeting on the 30th instead of the 16th.
Okay, and we don't know, obviously, at this point, whether we will have a meeting, but if we do, it's the 30th. Okay.
Would that be onsite or remote still?
Uh, I will maybe let Brian chime in, but our goal is to have onsite by that time. Um, you know, with everything going on, so that is the goal. Um, but it might be a a hybrid version. I think it just all depends on how this next month plays out.
Yeah, we're gonna be exploring a couple of options for that in the near future. Marty, the, there's some technical challenges that we're trying to overcome as far as, um, you know, how to, how to link these together. I think there would be an opportunity for people who are not comfortable uh, coming to the facility to join via, uh, remote presence and and then merge with the the live meeting. There's also some concerns about how many people we're gonna be gathering as far as a crowd for uh, agenda items that may be more, um, controversial, so we need to kind of, kind of work through those uh, challenges.
Have you thought much about, uh, you know, we're doing this Facebook Live, and people are supposed to provide emails beforehand, but you know, i- in the spots for public comment, um, is there a way to, I'm assuming on Facebook Live, they can give comments of incorporating them during the public comment stage?
Um, so what we have done is we've introduced, um, there's the, there's a public comment email address where we are receiving public comments for people who wish to participate in the meeting. If someone does wish to participate in the meeting, um, we have facilitated that with them joining the Zoom call as well, but we do need to
Okay.
set that up ahead of time. Um, we are live streaming the meeting, because we're not, don't have the building open to the public, but this is similar to people who would be sitting in the audience uh, at that time. So we wouldn't be integrating them into the meet. So, for example, if we held this meeting in person, we would have had a open public comment period on the agenda where we could speak about topics that were either on the agenda without a public hearing, or that were, um, on the, or not on the agenda, stick the justice commission on items that not there, but both of the action items tonight did not have a public hearing. So those action items, um, you know, it's the similar scenario as to they would be sitting in the audience. There wouldn't be a you know, opportunity for them to speak on those agenda items.
Okay.
As I just been on Facebook, there are a considerable number of comments, and one of the frequent conferences that they want us to look at the comments, so.
I I understand that, um, Eric, but there is a open meetings concern with that.
Sure.
Number one, um, and our attorney has kind of weighed in on that. Um, the second piece is that, um, you know, I think that we've, we've kind of established the protocols for people in engaging in the meeting, and um, you know, this is a very fluid time, and we're evaluating those for every meeting. But really, we kind of need to stick to the protocols that we've set, uh, as far as, I have also been watching those
Fair enough.
Through the meeting. Um, we've, it's just a kind of a report, we've been ranging between 17 and 24 people watching the meeting as well.
And I'll note, Brian, um, we did provide, uh, an opportunity similar to the town council for public comments to come in prior to the meeting, uh, and also when the packet went out, um, there was that advertisement for that. So opportunities were had, um, in those comments, uh, could have been received and and brought onto the record prior to the meeting, so, um, a- and I understand that there is probably some frustration with folks that are watching it live and not being able to have their voice heard. Um, but again, these are, these types of site plan applications are uses by right, and they are, uh, they don't have that public, um, uh, comment, uh, perspective to them. It is probably part of a challenge that we're, uh, that we're in with that.
I- is there a way for us to, having heard what Eric said, uh, is there a way uh, for us to go back after this meeting onto Facebook and at least see what those comments were?
Uh, I believe so. I know the meetings are, um, so this meeting will be up on Facebook um, afterwards in the towns video section, um, and I believe those comments that are being made currently and the comments that are being, would be made after the fact would all remain attached to that.
Okay, if if for some reason, commissioners, if if you share that concern, want to see those things, uh, if we can't, are you able to to get those to us in another, in another medium?
I am unsure.
No, those are available afterwards, Phil.
They are, okay.
You can.
All right. I'm the least tech savvy of everybody here, I presume.
Well, I I will put the full disclaimer that before I was in charge of streaming these meetings on Facebook, I was, did not have a Facebook.
Fair enough, fair enough.
We encourage residents to, what's the best avenue for them to place comment, staff, with you guys? Is it to email you guys directly? What's, what's the best way for someone?
They should.
Let's make that apparent to everybody.
Yeah, they, they should email into that public comment, um, at timothygov, email, um, that's gonna be the best way um, that they should submit their comments, and then that's when, um, they will be provided to council uh, for their review. They will get those, uh, emails, um, that they can, um, review. That's gonna, that's gonna be the best way for, um, the public to get, um, their comments in is uh, to send it to that email to be part of the official formal record.
Okay, uh, staff, commissioners, any, anything else? Nothing, anybody speak now? No? Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
For a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Lisa Bard?
Yes.
Commissioner Don Rizden?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott Royce?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Marty Jost?
Yes.
Chairperson Philip Goldstein.
Yes, uh, we're adjourned, thank you all very much. Appreciate it. It's been a little challenging, staff, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good night.